Aye.
Aye.
Great. Executive sessions held between meetings.
On Tuesday, April twenty-second, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding active or pending litigation, tax assessment, public safety considerations relating to the purchase or lease of real property.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Any questions of Mr. Hagerty? Hearing none, we will now move on to salary board. Sorry, we just needed to make sure salary board was here for the approval of those minutes. Commissioner, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. So you all voted on the salary board?
Just on the, just on the meeting, just on the meeting minutes. Sorry, sorry, sorry. So you can go ahead and introduce.
So the salary board packet that was presented at last week's meeting stands as presented. There were no changes.
Do I have a motion for items A and B under salary board?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Controller Bateman. Any discussion?
Just for verification, these numbers within the allocated 2025 budget.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
And I'll send it back to Mr. Hagerty. I think there's some point of clarification.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I failed to report out an additional executive session that happened this past Friday relating to collective bargaining agreements.
And you're good if I disconnect, correct?
Yes, you are good, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for those of you who aren't aware, Mary's at a conference and was unable to join us as she's at a conference. And so I thank her for joining us for salary board as we needed a quorum. Human resources personnel packet. Any discussion?
There were a couple of changes to the personnel packet. Those changes were communicated to the board.
Do I have a motion for the personnel packet?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fay. Budget and finance director, Mr. Davis.
Commissioners? I have no changes to the investment report that was sent out this morning. I also have no changes to the purchase order packet that's ready for your approval.
Do I have a motion for the purchase order packet approved?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I do, I do want to say one thing. I want to thank Mr. Davis for setting up the weekly meetings with us to go over the budget as we start seeing some potential budget constraints ahead of us. And I've asked Mr. Davis to provide the board with the list of current vacancies within the county. Go back to beginning of the year.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Hagerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have several matters requiring board action today. Twelve property and property tax related items, one courts-related legal services agreement, two solid waste and recycling agreements, two controllers' office agreements with Zelen, Zelenkovsky Axle Rock for auditing services, one budget office agreement with digital assurance certification for annual filings, one parks and recreation agreement with Flyway Excavating for the Fort Hunter-Fishing Creek Bank Stabilization Project, twenty-one Parks and Rec event-related agreements, one AAA agreement, five human services agreements, three children and youth agreements, three adoption agreements, one mental health agreement, one commercial lease agreement with the IDA, and four board appointments. I do have a few clarifications on some of these items. First, I'd like to clarify item number fifteen on today's agenda, which was inadvertently written in a little bit of a confusing manner. This request for $4,647 is for DE Gemel to use thermoplastic line painting for the new traffic flow pattern at the recycling center for safety concerns and will last up to five years or more. This is implementation of a technical assistance grant the county received from DEP in 2023. So that's the source of this, and I think I wrote it in a little bit of a confusing way on the agenda.
Which number, which number was that again?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? We have fifteen at five thousand two hundred and seventy-six. Just want to make sure the numbers are accurate. So yeah.
I'm going to ask Kelly to.
Thanks, Kelly.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you, Kelly?
Good. How are you?
Good.
The four thousand is the correct amount.
Okay.
Yes, that is the correct amount.
Should we amend that for, for, we should amend that then?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the number again that you shared?
Four thousand six hundred and forty-seven.
Okay. Four thousand six hundred and forty-seven. All right. We will make that amendment when the time comes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Second, we are recommending tabling items seventeen and eighteen on today's agenda for further, further legal review. And as we have in previous weeks, also recommending tabling the indemnification agreement with the church next door. Lastly, I'd like to point out our fancy new digital timer here, so folks providing public comment can more easily tell how much time they have remaining instead of me interrupting you all the time. So hope that's effective. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerty. Any questions? All right. Mr. Owens, solicitor report.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. There are fifty-nine matters requiring board action. Of course, we're tabling a number of those. Those that are being voted on today have been reviewed and approved for a vote by the solicitor's office.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? All right. Hearing none. We are moving on to matters requiring board action.
Mr. Chairman, let's make a motion that we approve items one through fifty-nine and table items seventeen and eighteen.
I would like to pull an item. And I also think we need to amend item fifteen, so I will not second that. Can I provide a motion for pulling item forty-three and, and voting on everything you just shared? And just the amendment of fifteen's amount being four thousand six hundred and forty-seven instead of the number that's right, that's there, number fourteen, on number fifteen. So items one through sixteen with the amendment to fifteen, items nineteen through forty-two, items forty-four through fifty-nine. I'll present that motion.
Can you go over that one more time, please?
Items one through sixteen with fifteen being amended in the amount of four thousand six hundred and forty-seven. Items nineteen through forty-two. Items forty-four through fifty-nine. Sure. Motion to recess. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
We are reconvening. I'll hand it over to Mr. Hagerty.
Thank you, Commissioners. I would like to report out that on Wednesday, April twenty-third, the Commissioners held a brief executive session to obtain the advice of legal counsel on procedure.
Yeah, so just for clarification, point of clarification on the motion prior to us recessing, it is inclusive of item fifteen, which is amended at four thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. With that motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll present the motion for the tabling of items seventeen and eighteen as presented for more.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And the item left is forty-three.
I'll make a motion to support item number forty-three. Human services agreement of Tri-County HDC Limited to supplement a project at fifteen twenty-one to fifteen twenty-three Thompson Street in Harrisburg, budget of two hundred ninety-nine thousand, paid via the ERAP Emergency Rental Assistance to State Funds.
No second. Motion dies on the floor. Former business. Under former business, I'll make a motion to table the indemnity agreement for another week as advised by the chief clerk. Do I have a second? Wonderful.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Commissioners, discussion and actions. Commissioner Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to report that I've been meeting with my new oversights and during those discussions, we've been discussing what we've all agreed to is a great concept, which is a human services project, a one-stop shop of all the agencies coming into one location. We've been discussing this at a particular location, this Watarra Township. However, at this time, I'm not sure the viability of this project moving forward. Hopefully, my mindset changes on that. But over the past six months, it's been determined that we've had little or no activity on that project. No project manager, no construction manager, no architect. As timelines are concerning me as well as there's no cost estimate provided to date. So I just wanted to share that in being open and transparent as we've talked about what a great concept this project will be. However, if things aren't coming along expeditiously, then the project is not going to be viable, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. Yesterday, we celebrated Earth Day. Just wanted to encourage those in Dolphin County as the weather's getting nicer to make sure you're taking time to go out and enjoy nature and get out into our parks. We have a great Parks and Rec system throughout our county and a great staff to run that system. And just as the weather gets nicer, awesome opportunity to get outside, get some fresh air, and continue to celebrate Earth Day every day as you get outside. With that, we'll move on to correspondence as I see none. And now we will head on to public participation, of which I have a list to call first. And after I call these individuals, then we will move to if there's anyone left in the room who would like to speak. It is just once a reminder of a three-minute cap, and we are being live streamed. I have Pamela Parsons first for public participation, and Gary Linker is on deck.
As Pamela comes up, can I just add something quickly? I want to thank, there's several individuals here today who we have pointed to our boards. This has been brought up in the past, and I want to thank those individuals for submitting their applications and their interest in serving on these various boards in Dolphin County. It just shows that since we put that out there, we're getting new names, new individuals and new interest in participating. And thank you each of you for wanting to serve on behalf of the residents. Appreciate it. Pamela?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. Thank you, Commissioner Priest, for taking that moment to thank the people who were here, who are recently appointed. I appreciate that, too. And I also see that putting that information out there has generated more interest in our boards and commissions. And I also appreciate the update on where we are with the human services, one-stop shop and what's happening, and more importantly, what's not happening. So thank you for that. The last time I was here, I was wrong on the funding sources for the Commissioner SUVs. And after the meeting, Commissioner Priest corrected me, which I appreciate. And because I made an incorrect statement publicly, I would like to correct my statement so that the record reflects that. And the only way to do that is to do that publicly. I had stated that the Commissioner SUVs were paid for from the county budget, but rather, they are paid for from gaming grants. For me, this still does raise some questions about just because we can, should we? And if we can use gaming grants for that, can we not use them for other things that are needed in the county? And maybe just taking a look at that. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Gary Linker, and on deck is Gene Stilt.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to chat. I did have two items to bring before you. I had shared with you.
Could you please state your name for the record? I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Gary Linker, Executive Director, Tri-County Housing. We are celebrating our thirty-fifth year of serving Dolphin, Commonwealth and Perry Counties with affordable housing. I had shared with the Commissioners in mid-March that we had received some bad news on a affordable housing project, Veterans Affordable Housing Project in Halifax Township in Upper Dolphin County, six-unit townhouse, new construction. We had been supported by former Senator Casey in an earmark appropriation that was in the Senate Appropriations Bill that was approved late last October of one billion dollars for that project. Unfortunately, when Congress passed the continuing resolution here a number of weeks ago, all federal earmarks were eliminated. Thankfully, Senator Fetterman's office reached out to us just last Friday and has indicated that he will sponsor this project again for the upcoming FY twenty-six earmark appropriation. And I sent you both a letter of support that I would greatly appreciate you assisting us with. Secondly, I was prepared to thank you for support of item number forty-three that was removed from the agenda. We were very much anticipating this funding and hoping I can have some understanding as to why that was removed from the agenda, whether it's this forum or after the meeting, Commissioner.
Certainly. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Gene Stilt, and that is the end of our list, and then I will open it to the floor. floor.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If we, Gene Stilp, Fish and Creek Valley. Oh, there we are. They are the list of, I just served the Solicitor and yourselves the interrogatories with the case we filed against reopening Three Mile Island just a few weeks ago in court. And we're working with the Solicitor hopefully to solve this. Anyhow, the, and to that. One thing I wanted to spend my time on today is talking about the low level, excuse me, the high-level nuclear waste that's at Three Mile Island. It remains a considerable condition. The Commissioner just responded, reported about, about, reported about Earth Day. And in regard to Earth Day, one of the main things in this county, this county serves as the, one of the most polluted, if you will, places on the, on Pennsylvania, having a high-level nuclear waste dump. Originally, way before your time, it was designed that the, designed that the federal government would take care of that and move that high-level nuclear waste out of there. Since that time, and in the meantime, everybody in this room who has pays electric bill and all through the county has paid in a fee so that the high-level nuclear waste dump could exist out in, out in the West, I think it was Yucca Mountain. What happened, though, is that the, everybody had paid into that. And what happened is that right now, the total is $47 billion in that fund. And about 10 years ago, 15 years ago, the utility said nothing's happening. So they sued the federal government, a big part of energy, so that the, they would not have to pay any more money into there. All right? And then the utility started suing to get the money back. Unfortunately, unfortunately, that money never reaches the ratepayer. So there's an opportunity here to actually sue on behalf of the ratepayers, taxpayers, county governments, et cetera, and businesses. They should all sue to get that money returned to them for the money that's been put in there. In the meantime, though, we have the onset of this new proposal from Constellation to reopen Three Mile Island. And guess what that does? That starts the process running up, generating another 350 tons to join the 700 tons of high-level nuclear waste, the most poisonous substance on earth in this county again. You, under your Public Safety Department guidelines, have an opportunity and also a duty to prevent that from happening. There shouldn't be no more waste generated because it does present a, present a problem for this county, not only to the present people, but also for the future, future generations on an infinite. Lastly, lastly, because we have Susquehanna, we have Beach Bottom also here, each generating nuclear waste. Actually, the Susquehanna River is the most nuclear river in the country. And so I'm here to say we can put a stop to this by stopping the, turning on a Three Mile Island. And you have that in your, in your, in your bills to do that by not go operating with the emergency evacuation plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right under the time. Look at that. All right. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else in the room for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioners. First and foremost, want to thank you for.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Ralph Rodriguez, 19th Street, Harrisburg. I like to first and foremost, thank you for the proclamation, giving All You Can Incorporated April 15th in honor of the citywide cleanups, keeping PA beautiful, keeping Dolphin County beautiful. So that was just a great experience we had on the 15th with Ms. Kelly when they presented with Keep PA Beautiful. So I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the organization for that. But also, I am here on behalf of All You Can Incorporated. We've always had a great relationship with the county and all the services provided. We are drug and alcohol providers. But I wanted to see Mr. Commissioner Douglas. I speak to you, as much as I try to, you say, reach out, and I've just been having a struggle getting a meeting with you. Commissioner Priest, thank you for taking the meeting with me and understanding how the severity of some of the circumstances I'm trying to speak about. I don't come to you asking for anything for myself. I'm coming to you to ask, how can we deepen our relationship to help better take care of the families in Dolphin County? We have great services, and we've been honored with every award, from the mayor, accommodation all the way down to the commander's award with the Marines. We have all the metrics that any entity can dream of, but we're having difficulties. At one point, we were going to be a great provider in the Harrisburg School District, but Mr. Termin backed out and also provided a letter stating he apologized. But for some reason, I think it's a dark cloud over the organization, which I'm just willing to have a deeper conversation about that. Definitely, I look forward to that conversation. But I do want to know, some of the larger events in Dolphin County come from All You Can. We serve over 5,800 for Christmas, at the PA Farm Show. Our after-school program and summer camps are having, I mean, extraordinary metrics and great success, not only with student retention, with grade point average. I mean, we have now the president of student council in our class. We now have the high school representative council in our class, and we're doing great. Some of our 12-year-olds are walking around with window installation certifications, CPR, AED certifications, archery, camping, fishing, you name it. We are certified in so much. I just want to know what the struggle and complication is deepening our relationship so we could do more for families in Dolphin County. That's my piece, and thank you for your time.
Councilman Rodriguez, I just want to let you know, it is, it is simply a matter of how packed my schedule is right now that I haven't had a chance to, I haven't had a chance to, to, to get with you, but I plan on doing it.
We're all busy. I have five children, run an organization, help run a city. I could keep adding to that, but I would never use that as an excuse for you.
Okay.
God bless you.
Thank you.
I just want to add thanking you, Ralph, for the great work that you do and many hats that you wear as an elected official councilman for the City of Harrisburg, the work you do with All You Can, the positive impact you're having on tomorrow's leaders, children of today. I saw how they looked at you, looked up to you. And also, a lot of people don't know this, but he is someone who works with our solid waste department, Kelly with McGonall, whenever you see illegal dumping port. And hundreds of tons in the city have been cleaned up as a result of what you've done, your observations. So keep up the great work.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. My name is Elizabeth from Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Earth Day is every day to me. I love the river, and we should monitor for, for a healthy river so our residents can enjoy the river in confidence. To help our city move into becoming a smart city, we need to have a municipal Wi-Fi system in which many cities across the country have them. All we have to do is equip our city with the municipal Wi-Fi. This would enable us to put cameras up wherever we need to put cameras up to monitor dumping, to monitoring criminal activity, and as a deterrent. Wi-Fi also helps regard to putting cameras, speed cameras on Front Street because people that, the transients that come into Harrisburg, they speed on Front Street. And it's very difficult for our residents to cross the street so they can enjoy the river. We have to, we could create revenue off the speed cameras as well as the deterrent. And I really feel as though that our, our residents are really stressed out when they're trying to cross Front Street. You can go up there, you can see how fast they go, 50 mile, clock them at 50. That's pretty fast for Front Street. Nobody can't cross that street when our transients come in with that type of speed. To make our, to make our more entertainers come in, make more visitors come, I'm proposing a football stadium on City Island with a Hall of Fame that highlight all players from our region that make it to the NFL. Wildwood Lake is an issue when it comes to flood mitigation. We have to drain Wildwood Lake so it can be functional, like our forefathers had set it up. It's all silted in. Susquehanna Township, with all their improvement, actually, the silt runs right into Wildwood Lake. In the 1940s, you can actually sail boats. There were, there, I saw pictures, and they had 40 sailboats on Wildwood Lake. Now it's impossible. You can't even canoe. We need to do, fix Wildwood so we don't have flooding. That's what it was built for, as a flood mitigation process. And there is no depth, so it doesn't hold water. We have to do this. I understand about the lily pads, but we can actually propagate more lily pads. Let's do something that's functional and that we need done. Thank you.
Mr. Butts?
I'd just like to follow up on, on at least one of those topics. You bring up the Wildwood Lake issue. I can tell you that's been a topic that's been a discussion topic here at the county. I'll go back to John Payne, Loman Henry, and Tony Petrucci. We're looking into that. And we're still looking into it. The cost is prohibitive at this time, upwards of $20 million plus to dredge it. But we are working with folks at the federal government and lobbyists there to try to find a, a resource stream. Well, in terms of the, the cameras throughout the city and the Wi-Fi, that's something I would be supportive of. We'd have to check out the cost there, but it would limit criminal activity and dumping and, and speeding and make a safer, more walkable city. That's something I don't think anybody would be opposed to. Just have to certainly see what the engineering issues are and the technological issues are. And we'd also have to get support from city council and the mayor.
Now, we could actually bag up the, the silt in Wildwood Lake and sell it. It's a good fertilizer, and it, and it, it costs. We can, we can bag it up and sell it if we need to make money off the process.
I can't answer to that. I know our, our director of Parks and Rec is here, so I'll be asking her afterwards if that's something we could even look into. But thank you.
Thank, no, thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none. All entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second. For adjourn.